Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education June 3rd Work Session. The board has just reconvened from closed session to open session. We have our board member, Brian Floyd, who is joining us. Brian, can you hear us? Okay. So we will move to 4.01 for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members will move to 5.01 to adopt our agenda. I call for a motion to adopt the agenda for the June 3rd Work Session as presented. So move. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Escobar. Is there any discussion about the agenda, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been adopted. We'll move to 6.01, Board Chair Comments. Board members, I just want to thank you for attending the graduations that we had for all 12 of the higher high schools. I know that was a time commitment for you, but it was just an awesome experience to see all of our students walk across and receive their diplomas and to be able to be present at that. So thank you very much for that, board members. I'll move to 6.02 with Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Akok. Echoing your sentiments, I'd like to thank the 2,711 graduates, the Board of Education, our high school and district staff members, and more than 23,000 attendees for their hard work and cooperation in making last week's graduation ceremonies a success. I'd also like to thank the leadership of our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, Gordon Palmer, for the organizing and the smooth operation of that. I know it's a big burden on you and a lot of work that you did, so I appreciate that and your leadership on that particular task. And speaking of those graduates, I'm proud to report that the class of 2024 was offered more than $36 million in scholarships district-wide. That's an increase of nearly $5 million over last year. So congratulations to all graduating seniors and their families, and we wish them luck in their future endeavors. The 11th Annual Blumenthal Performing Arts Center, BLOOMY Awards, were held on Sunday, May 26. The BLOOMY Awards are presented by Bank of America and honor high school students and groups in 15 various categories, including Best Musical, Best Actor, Best Actress, and many more. Congratulations to Central Cabarrus High School for winning the Tier One Bank of America Best Musical Award for its production of Pippin. Central Cabarrus Theater is directed by Drew Chloe. This is the second straight year that a Cabarrus County school's group or student has been honored with one of the highest recognitions a high school theater participant can receive. Central Cabarrus graduate Makaya Smith was also a nominee in the Best Actress category this year. Our art students, teachers, and programs, both visual and performing, continue to rank them on the best in the state and nation, and we are very proud of them. So congratulations again to those award winners. Summer engagement with families. Wednesday is the final day of school for Wolf Meadow and will officially conclude the 23-24 school year for Cabarrus County schools. As summer break moves through June and into July, we look forward to continuing to communicate important updates with our families through Parent Square, social media, and other district and school tools. Parents, please make sure your Parent Square accounts are registered, and note that you will not be able to communicate with your 24-25 teachers until after open house in early August. Also, any transportation address changes that occur between now and the beginning of school should be directed to your home school. The Edgelog Bus App will cease to function on June 15th in order to begin uploading for the 2024-25 bus information into the app. Safety Town for Rising Kindergartens. The Junior Charity League of Concord will host their annual Safety Town for Rising Kindergarteners on July 29th and July 30th from 8:30 to 12:30 at the Royal Oak School of the Arts. Help your rising kindergarten start to school your strong with this free half-day event with age-appropriate programming on nutrition, dental hygiene, gun safety, fire safety, stranger danger, and more. Learn more or register at the Junior Charity League of Concord website. In the open house for the fall of 2024, Cabarrus County Schools will host open house events for families and students during the first week of August. Middle school open house will be held on Monday, August 7th from 4:30 to 6:30. High schools will host their open houses on Monday, the 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And elementary school open houses will be on Tuesday evening, August 8th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So please keep in mind that we will be talking about going back to school very soon, okay? And then lastly, I just want to update our community and the local press about an issue that we are very well aware of, and I just want to make a statement tonight to inform those that we are aware of that, and we're continuing to work with the appropriate authorities on this particular issue. So the Cabarrus County Schools is aware of an online petition and P to Statement involving the possibility that chimney swifts may be nesting in limited locations on the property that previously housed Beverly Hills Elementary School. We appreciate those in the community that have brought attention to this potential issue, especially as the school system continues to work towards preparing the site for a new pre-kindergarten building for the children of Mary Frances Wall Center, which serves our children between the ages of three and five. Cabarrus County School staff have retained a wildlife consultant to determine if any chimney swifts are actually nesting at the site, and if so, where. If a bird nesting site is present, Cabarrus County School staff will work with the appropriate local, state, and/or federal agencies to determine a reasonable, responsible approach and coordinate the timing of demolition and construction activities to limit ecological impacts. So I thank everyone for emailing us and making us aware of this situation. We will continue to inform the public as we uncover the details specifically around the chimney swifts. So I thank you very much. And then lastly, I wanted to talk, and we had some questions as to our valedictorian process and salutatorian process here in Cabarrus County schools. If I could take a moment, I'd like Mr. Palmer to address our board on that as to how we go about ranking our students in the Cabarrus County school system. Mr. Palmer?
Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, members of the board. So we use a Latin honor system to recognize our graduates in Cabarrus County schools. We have summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude, as most people commonly recognize them. For you to be summa cum laude, you'll have a 4.32 or higher GPA. Magna cum laude is a 4.0 to a 4.319. And cum laude is 3.625 to a 3.999 GPA. And while I was researching this, this goes back to a change that was prior to 2008. My approximation is around 2005 to 2008 is when this change occurred, when we went to an electronic transcript. I know that as a former high school principal, working in a neighboring county, we actually went through this process in around 2013, when the state made a change from a seven-point grading scale to a 10-point grading scale, which would then have a wider range of grades. The reason the state did that was because they wanted us to stay competitive with other states when our students were applying to colleges outside of North Carolina. So there's reason for those changes, and a lot of districts across the state at that point in time did exactly what Cabarrus County did years prior. So we've had lots and lots of graduates since 2008, roughly 35,000 graduates. I've only had one complaint when it comes to valedictorian, recognition of valedictorian or salutatorian, and I've been here through three graduation cycles, which would be approximately 8,000 students that have graduated. And I checked with our former high school director, and he said he hadn't received any complaints, and he graduated roughly 16,000 graduates. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you for doing the research on that, because we really couldn't figure out when all of that changed. So from my understanding, instead of having the valedictorians speak, they, the student population, they either vote on somebody, or what is the normal process for that? If you could explain?
So I would say years and years and years ago, even when I was a high school principal, before we had made the change, we would typically offer a valedictorian or salutatorian an opportunity to speak. Sometimes they also didn't want to speak. So we leave it up to the students to decide, and the administrations at the school to kind of recognize, and sometimes those students do want to speak, and sometimes they don't want that opportunity, because as you guys have seen in the arena, it is a large crowd, and sometimes they feel not implied to do that. So the schools decide how they choose their speakers.
So I think, I mean, my only question or issue with it was the fact that there was a valedictorian that did want the opportunity to speak, and from my understanding, that opportunity was not there. So I guess what I'm wondering is, should we create, again, this goes back to the schools not all having the same thing in place as far as what we do at graduation and who speaks. So is that something, and I hear what you're saying, you've had 8,000 kids that have graduated and no complaints until maybe now. But I'm just wondering if that should be something that we talk about to do across the board and how we handle that?
What I would say to that is, a lot of times, our sit teams work with our student councils, and they can decide. And so I would say, sometimes the difference between one high school to the next would be the decision of the students and their student council. I have no problem working with our graduation coordinators. I meet with them roughly every month to make sure that we have smooth processes leading up to graduation, where we can have those discussions for consistency across schools. But I would say the only difference would be if one student council and sit team kind of, their students choose a different path, but we can work with consistency there, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Sandage?
I just wanted to make note while we have this opportunity that all of the speakers this year were phenomenal. I think they did great. I mean, I saw examples where, you know, folks didn't have their speech, or it wasn't ready, and they, like, they brought it. So if you guys are listening, you did a great job, having attended all of the graduations this year.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. That's all I have, Mrs. Akok.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Okay, we'll move to 6.03, our Attorney Comments. Mr. Eisenhower, do you have anything to share with the board?
I don't.
Okay. We will move to Reports and 7.01 with our Budget Summary and Board Report with Mr. Phil Penn. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. We're currently projecting, as you can kind of see in the memo, if we can kind of get that trued up on the screen, a surplus of about $2 million for the 2023-24 year. Any questions? No. So no. That's obviously quite a dramatic turnaround from where we were earlier in the year, and through a lot of work with a lot of people over many months. I think it's 44 discrete items that I can track that impacted that. And as you'll see in the memo, one of the things that we're talking about, if we could just go to the Word section of that on the screen, please, is, you know, we've started to look at things that have popped up that were not expected, that we think there's a good opportunity for us to address out of that surplus before year end. I gave an example in the memo of two vans to help transport our students that are experiencing homelessness, as the population continues to grow very rapidly. We have three other vans that are in the 24-25 budget, but in talking with our Director of Transportation, frankly, we couldn't wait that long. So there's still a need for making sure that we have the resources in place prior to the beginning of school, starting back up in August. Second thing I mentioned in there is, like, if you look at the proposed budget for the county for 24-25 in terms of what's been presented to the commissioners, there was a couple of software packages that are sort of vital to our operation that did not go forward as a recommended funding. We're taking advantage of some of the funds that we have right now to pay through for those renewals, to make sure that they're in place. That buys us time. It doesn't solve the problem completely, but it at least addresses it for 24-25. There is a tremendous amount of work that has to now happen in the next 27 days to make sure that we are closed out by the end of the year, including any kind of budgetary transfers that need to make happen and make sure that we are balanced both by fund and by program code within those funds. So there is one other opportunity coming forward, I think it's on the 24th, to address any of those transfers that need to take place, and then it's also to pass just a continuing budget resolution for the 24-25 year, until we have better visibility coming from the state, coming from local, coming from federal, on what our actual budgets will be, and that will be when we then come forward with, like, an initial budget resolution to start the 24-25 year, sometime after we get back in place, and hopefully the legislature takes action prior to when they took action last year. That would be beneficial for, I think, everybody. All right. Questions?
Ms. Sandage?
All right, so I might have to go back here a little bit. So when we have a surplus, that goes into fund balance?
Correct.
All right. So will we get to a point in fund balance, since you're finding all of this money, which is good stuff, I'm guessing, where we get in a situation where we're saying, we've got too much fund balance, you guys need to use your fund balance?
Yep.
Do we have a plan for that?
We have a policy now that the board approves.
I got that.
Right? And the policy actually laid out sort of what the opportunities would be going forward. So, you know, there's no requirement that you act on that, but you do have the opportunity to say, okay, when we look at all the deferred maintenance that we have around the district, are there other projects that we would surface that perhaps the county did not fund that now become top of pile that we would want to address?
Which brings me to my next question. Okay, go. I'm sorry.
I just want to kind of reiterate with what Mr. Penn just said. So Ms. Sandage, what we're going to do at the end of the year, when the budget closes out, after the board is all done with their meetings, on June 24th, I believe is the last budget meeting, then June 30th, we wrap it up. I'll sit with Mr. Penn. I'll also sit with Dr. Bowers, Tim Lauter, and Brian Cohen and the facilities team, and let's assess where we are, what we have, and see if we want to make some recommendations to the board at that time. Also, as Mr. Penn has pointed out, there are a couple of things that we're not funded that we're going to have to cover, that are vile to what we do on a day-to-day basis. So we'll assess all that stuff, and we'll come back to the board and make any necessary recommendations that we think we're going to make.
Okay.
And I probably would not make that recommendation until we have a lot of the financials for the year as well.
Okay. And then as it relates to the deferred maintenance, I am no longer on the Budget Committee, so I don't know how that process works, but is there a, can you explain the process for when we identify what's important and what comes next? What process do you guys use now for that?
Sure. That emanates from our Facilities and Maintenance Department, who then will go out and assess sort of what all the needs are, looking through all the different projects. And if you recall, there's something like 800 projects below $500,000, another 90 or so, like, above that range. I may be a little bit off of my numbers, but they do a prioritization rank that they're forced to do to rank everything and every project that we have. So we will then surface what becomes our largest, most important projects in our ask for the capital request from the county, and now we're in the process of waiting to see, okay, of the projects that we proposed, how many of those are actually getting funded? So there is sort of a template out there already, or a roadmap, if you would, in terms of, okay, if we don't get the funding that we requested, what then becomes next on the list?
I think the other thing to add to that, too, is, to your point, for all the board to know, Chuck Taylor does a phenomenal job at the, right around this time of year, probably a month or so back, probably two months or so back, he meets with all the principals in sessions one-on-one. He'll go to all 45 schools, and he'll get their input from the principals and ask them what the needs are. He and his team then assess, they walk the building, they go through things, they have both the past list that they worked off of, and then the current ones, and some suggestions that they may make, and he compiles all that information, makes his recommendation, works with the rest of the Facilities Department to get the right projects in place.
Gotcha. And then my last question is, is that process public information?
It's public in the sense that we published the list of all the projects on our website, and it was included in our budget presentations also.
Trying to think how I can ask that differently, but I'm trying to make sure, if I want to understand what was looked at and how we got to this answer, oh, sorry, how we got to this answer, that's public information?
Other than just recounting the process to you now, I'm not sure what else we would do, frankly.
Okay.
Is it a board decision on those items ultimately?
Not to my knowledge, no. Yeah.
Maybe I need to think about that question a little bit, and maybe I can just send you an email.
Okay. That'd be fine.
I will say, though, we do have good documentation on all deferred maintenance projects, one through whatever the number ends at. Chuck has detailed information, detailed records on what all those projects are. You hear us all refer to the top 36 of projects that we propose and try and get funded, but he's got, he has years of data on all the projects that have been done, what's still out there and listed, so that is available for anybody to see if they should request it.
Any other question, board members?
So it just needs to be requested?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I can't recall when. I know we've published that several times for the various presentations.
It's actually published on our website. If you're going to the 24-25 section for the budget on the finance part of the website, you'll see the actual list of the projects that are out there, the entire ranking of them.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Mr. Floyd, did you have any questions? Okay. Okay, board members, we're gonna move on to the summary. You've got something else?
I think it's a little later on in the agenda, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll let you go then.
Thank you.
We'll move to 8.01 with our Items for Consent or Action. We'll start with the MPS Parking Lot and Drive Replacement with Mr. Chuck Taylor. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Kapicki. So it's my pleasure this evening to ask the board to approve the bids for the Mount Pleasant Elementary School parking lot. I'm pretty sure everybody up there has rode through that parking lot and knows it needs to be replaced. So the one thing I do want to let you know that is a little bit special about this, we actually received funding for a repair under the 25-499 list that Dr. Kapicki was talking about from the county. But because we had some favorable bids come in on other projects, we were able to pull together enough to do a complete parking lot replacement. So what I'm asking for tonight is your approval to spend $687,287.04. If you approve it, I'll throw the 0.04 in.
Any questions, board members? Mr. Walter?
So it was below the engineer's estimate, is what you're saying?
The other projects were below. There were four other projects that came in below that we were able to work with the county, move those funds to the parking lot fund, and because of that, we're going to be able to do the complete replacement.
Okay, and you've worked with a contractor that they can do this before school starts? Is that the plan?
Yes, sir. That would bring me to my next point. I would ask that you consider suspending the rules and approve it tonight. We have a very short summer window. I have about two weeks to play with. If we can go ahead and approve it tonight, get them started this week or the beginning of next week, that ensures that we will finish before school is back in session.
Okay, and is there a drawing or something that shows us exactly what's being replaced?
Yes, sir, I can provide that for you. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Ms. Escobar?
You answered my question. I just wanted to know, can it be done by August?
If the contractor is ready to go.
Okay, board members, are you in agreement to change this to an action item?
I think we need to suspend the rules to get the extra time.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I propose that we, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and that we approve this request tonight.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve this request?
I make the motion.
Second?
Have a motion by Mr. Tredaway, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll now move to 8.02, Central Cabarrus High School Tennis Court Surface Contract with Mr. Brian Cohen. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Kapicki, the Department of Construction received the bids for the two additional court projects that were approved as a part of the fiscal year 24 Cabarrus County's Pago projects. These projects involve a significant amount of repair to these court facilities that are located at Northwest Cabarrus High School and Cox Mill High School. According to Statute 143-129, Quality Seal Coating and Sports Surfaces from Pen Hook, Virginia, is the sole contractor in our area capable of installing the Pro-Bounce Monolithic Surfacing System. This statute permits the board to authorize the contractor as a sole source vendor. Upon approval, Quality Seal Coating Sports Surface will commence the preparatory work required in hopes of the goal of having it ready for use by this fall. The cost breakdown for these two schools is as follows. For Cox Mill High School, the contract's in the amount of $396,000. For Northwest Cabarrus High School, the contract is in the amount of $304,600. Tonight, we are requesting the approval of the contract totaling $700,600 with Quality Seal Coating and Sports Surfaces for these repairs. And attached in your agenda are the quotes, as well as the contract.
Ms. Escobar?
Just a point of clarification on this agenda. It says Central Cabarrus on 802.
Where?
But we're talking about Cox Mill and Northwest.
Oh, it does.
So I don't know how we change that. And I'm guilty of approving the motion.
No, it's a miss on my end.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, it's not your fault. That's on me. William, we would just have to change the wording on the 8.02, correct?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So if we just, if we just out loud say Cox Mill High School Tennis Sports Service?
That's right, because then it's Cox Mill and Northwest were clearly in the description. It's just, it's simply an error in the subject line.
And I probably read the description and didn't look at the heading, and that's how you see the miss. So I would ask that when the board made the motion, if they would just make the motion in Cox Mill High School Tennis Courts, and that would suffice, correctly?
Correct.
And Northwest.
So this is for consent, correct?
This is for consent, yes.
Consent or action? I'd like to see it on actions with the clarification for the next week, so we'll see it on the agenda, correctly.
Ms. Lindsay?
Sorry, thank you.
Yes.
So when you were talking about the company that does this?
Yes, ma'am.
There's literally only one company in the state of North Carolina that does this?
Well, he's actually out of Virginia, and there are no companies in the state of North Carolina that are doing the system that we've identified as our means of making these repairs. We previously, when we had quoted Central, thought we had a company down out of Charlotte, Carolina, Courtworks, that could install the system, but they were unable to provide those services for us. So yes, there are companies in Florida, but this is the closest company within our region.
Can you tell me again what are so special about these courts?
So the system is actually a synthetic turf system that bridges over the existing asphalt construction. So our biggest challenge that we have with our courts is that the asphalt, over a period of one or two years, fails and begins to crack. And so we get the undulations in the surface itself, we get grass growing up through them, they eventually become unplayable, and they're not safe for the students to play on. So what this surface has done is allowed us to bridge all of those imperfections. They come in with a turf system that then has a sand infill, that has a polymer binder that makes it a hard court, and then your normal surface prep and finish is put on after that. So instead of having a system that is able to crack, you've created a membrane the size of a court that is attached, and one big membrane that will not be able to deflect those imperfections through.
So is this standard practice for tennis courts in schools?
So we are one of the first ones in the area, but this contractor now says, within the next year, he has over 21 courts in North Carolina that he will be doing.
That are schools?
Some are schools. Alexandra Central High School is doing it. There's a system up in Iredale County, I believe, that is doing it, and this, obviously, is a system we're putting on Central Cabarrus as well.
What is, do you know the difference in price for what we're doing versus just the normal?
Standard? So you spend roughly 80, and it just depends on the severity of the imperfections in a court. So you're going to spend $70,000 to $80,000 every couple of years on a court, trying to make sure that they stay playable, but going in and patching cracks, and eventually those cracks are going to fail, so you're going to turn around and do that in another couple of years. This court will give us a life of at least 20 to 25 years. They say, well, we will not have to make any structural repairs to it, we would just have to resurface it based on the amount of play.
And how often would we have to resurface it?
Just based on the amount of play, how much wear and tear there is. So if you get a lot of.
Is there, like, an average on how much we, how often we would have to resurface?
Mr. Taylor, would you have an idea on how often you have to resurface a court? Because that would fall under Facilities. Every five, six years?
Yeah, you're looking at somewhere between seven and 10, five to six. Like I said, it depends on how active it is. If your school is more active, has more tournaments, then you're at more. If your school is more active, has more tournaments, then you're at more water.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll make a note that this is for action.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move to eight point zero three, the MOA with Rowan Cabarrus Community College with Mr. Gordon Palmer. Welcome back.
Good evening again. So I was gonna present both. I know they're two different items, but it's kind of probably easier to go over changes to both because we try to keep them as consistent as possible. But knowing that we work with a community college in one and then a private institution with the other. So for both MOAs, the Title IX regulations have stayed the same. That is something that we looked at in depth this year since we know that Title IX has changed from the federal government. And we have kept the verbiage in our MOAs so that it was flexible enough to hold true with any changes that may come down from the feds. But we're also going to look at that for next year. So in twenty twenty-five, there may be changes that come down. Right now, everything looks good there. The Parents' Bill of Rights is another area that was needed to, to be included in the new MOA since that was new legislation passed down from the state. All community colleges were required to put in verbiage in their MOAs. And so we worked with Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and we came up with terminology that works for us and them as well. And we've also included that same language in both MOAs for Cabarrus College of Health Science and RCCC. With RCCC, we made changes to their personnel. They had some adjustments in personnel where we just updated that to make sure that their Director of Recruitment and Retention and their responsibilities held true. We've updated our personnel to reflect any changes in Cabarrus County schools. We've updated our articulation agreements, which typically, they, these are state agreements, so we can link those in. But we've updated ours with special programs that we have through CTE. And then fees, we didn't have any change to fees with RCCC, but what we did is clarified the fees. And that was more on their end because their business office is driven by the MOA. So the changes that they needed to have for their business office was included. But when it comes to practice, there were no changes. For Cabarrus County, our Health Science Institute, we have changed some pathways. So we've updated those. We've had some change in personnel, so we've updated that. We have updated the admission and student academic progression. We've changed verbiage to future, from future tense to past tense because as we know, this is a new school. And previously, we were planning for the future, and this is what's going to happen. Now things are already in place, so we could change it to past tense, which are, again, minor changes. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any. These have also been approved by all attorneys with all institutions. Cabarrus College of Health Science and Atrium, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and our attorneys have all approved all the MOAs.
Mr. Walter.
Thank you for the summary of the different changes from this year and the last. Who are the liaisons? Are we design, have we designated those folks already?
The liaisons for RCCC.
Well, for us and for the contract, yes.
Yes, they, we don't put in their personnel names, but we've hired Michaela at the Cabarrus College of Health Science, and we have our liaisons with Cabarrus, Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And we just term them as liaisons and the personnel.
Same people, or is that?
Previously, with our new college, we didn't have a liaison, and we have hired since this year. And that is technically, they are not our employee, they are employee of the college.
But they're important persons.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, board members, are you in agreement to put eight point zero three and eight point zero four on the consent agenda for the June tenth work, business session? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go to eight point zero five, Policies for Approval on First Read with Dr. Sandy Ward. Good evening, Dr. Ward.
Good evening, how are we doing? All right, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kupicki, board members. We have several policies up for review this evening. We have not received any questions from the community and/or board members, so I will go through limited, very briefly what, what the changes are. All right, we have Policy thirty-four twenty, which is Student Promotion and Accountability. It adds a section to address students receiving high school credit for courses taken while abroad. And it also updates some legal references. Any questions?
Ms. Sandage.
This is not a question for you, but just technology. Is there any way for us to get what we're reviewing on the screen? Did, did we miss that today?
Good, no questions? All right. And recently, we have looked at Policy thirty-four sixty, which is our graduation requirements. There were some changes there, mostly adding that we now have a three-year track if, if students are interested in that. And then some other small, minor changes to our graduation policy. Any questions there?
I'm sorry, I was just curious. Does the three-year track affect our graduation rate and the cohorting for accountability?
Good evening. No, it does not impact our graduation rate. We still have a four-year graduation rate. So those students would just be in that cohort. So once they're graduated, they would count the, the next year.
Okay.
It doesn't say, even when they tell us, hey, I want to be a three-year graduate, we don't delineate that or, or put in power school. They're going, they're supposed to graduate in three years because the accountability model still has a four-year and a fifth-year option for accountability.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question. Any other questions? All right, our next policy is forty-one fifty, School Assignment, Transfers and Program Choice. And what we did here was just change the dates for requesting of hardship applications to align with our new CCS early calendar. So we had to move the dates.
Ms. Sandage.
I was just gonna say, can you clarify the dates that were changed?
There we go. Is that good?
Thank you.
So they're now accepted February first through April first versus March fifteenth to May fifteen. So this, this adoption will move it to February first and April first.
I just wanted that said out loud, that's all. There's been a lot of questions around this.
I got you, no problem. The next policy is fifty seventy-one, seventy-three fifty-one. It's a technical edit on how we store information on retention. We just updated legal references. I don't see it on the screen just yet. Any questions on legal references? Great. Seventy-one thirty is licensure. So we added a new section F regarding mandatory reporting of misconduct and about training to include the new statutory agreements. And we updated some legal references.
Ms. Escobar.
Ms. Ward. When, sorry.
Trying to make sure you see it.
I see you looking over there. I'm just looking at the summary, and when it says strongly recommended, that's strongly recommended from the committee, strongly recommended from the School Board Association, or strongly recommended by our lawyers, who?
Great question. So that would be strongly recommended from the North Carolina School Board Association. And what strongly recommended means is that it is in law and policy somewhere else, but they felt like it needed to be here so that everyone is aware. So when we do our policy meetings, we look at what's required, and we also look at strongly recommended, and we normally take strongly recommended just because it makes sense. Great question. And the next one is eighty-three forty, it's insurance. Questions there? We amended the language to include not just insurance, but also other types of liability coverage. And that was recommended. And Mr. Penn kind of rewrote that for us to add all the things.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you. Inland Marine, do we have that insurance?
It's a fancy way of saying stuff on a truck.
Oh, thank you.
I just read the reports, I don't really. Okay. Any questions other than? And the last one is ninety-one twenty-five, Participation by Minority-Owned Businesses. It modifies the first paragraph to, to reflect a statutory, which means a legal change to the definition of minority businesses. Questions, comments? Thank you.
Okay, board members, are we all in agreement to put these on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I ask that we pull ninety-one twenty-five for action, please.
Okay, we'll pull ninety-one twenty-five for action, and the rest will go on our consent agenda for our June tenth business meeting. So we'll move to eight point zero six. This is the policy for approval on second reading. And you don't look like Dr. Sandy Ward.
No, I'm definitely not Dr. Ward. All right, so good evening, everyone. Last, since our last conversation last month about the electronic use device policy revision, we, I have coordinated a, a request for more information to get input. And I have some information I want to share with you here today. If we could pull up that PowerPoint map. All right, so this electronic device survey data, I just wanted to share with you what was captured. A survey went out on Parent Square, and we had a lot of participation in this survey. And I just, again, wanted to, to show the group what was there. So if we could go to the next slide. So we surveyed parents, and we split parents into three different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Overall, we had six thousand, three hundred and eighty responses from the elementary school parents. We had twenty, twenty-six hundred and seventy responses. And you can see that seventy-five percent of our elementary school parents said I agree with our students putting electronic devices away for all day, whereas twenty-five percent said no, only during instructional time. Moving on to the middle school parents, right at eighteen hundred responses on that. And you can see that the results were a little different, where around sixty percent of the parents said I would like to see the, the cell phones put away all day, and forty percent saying just during instructional time. Then if we go to high school, right at nineteen hundred responses, nineteen hundred and eleven, you can see that thirty-six percent of them said, I believe, I agree that student personal electronic devices should be put away all day. And sixty-three percent said just, just during instruct, classroom instructional time. Moving forward to our staff, we thought it was important to get their input on this, too. For elementary school staff, we had right at five hundred responses. And they, you can see that overwhelmingly, right at ninety-one percent, ninety-two percent said they support all day as opposed to eight just during instructional time for our elementary staff. Looking at middle school staff, ninety-five percent of them said all day out of the three hundred and fifty-nine that responded with right at five percent just during instructional time. And then high school staff, you can see that differs a little from our elementary and our middle with the electronics devices, seventy-three percent saying all day. Yes, all day, while twenty, right at twenty-six percent said just during instructional time. And then finally, we surveyed our students. We did not survey elementary students, just middle and high. And we had a, a pretty good response here of nine hundred and thirty responses from our middle school students. And you can see that right at ninety percent of them said they would say only during instructional time, not all day. And look at, look at our high schoolers. You know, we're at ninety-six percent, ninety-five, ninety-six percent said just during instructional time as opposed to being off and away all day long. So that is the information that we gathered from the further input that, that we sent out via Parent Square. I just figured that would help with this discussion.
Okay, you want questions now?
Any questions, comments about any of that that I can help with?
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I just think it's important that our stakeholders be felt, felt heard and have an opportunity to provide input to that. It seems consistent on what we're predicting anyway and why that policy is written the way it's written currently. Supports what the survey comes back at. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Any questions about the policy itself, forty-three eighteen? Everyone in agreement to put this on the consent agenda?
Do we want to give the public one more time, opportunity to speak during public comment period next week? Yeah, put it on action, please.
Okay, so forty-three eighteen is on action for the business meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to eight point zero seven, Instructure Purchase with Ms. Sarah Reeves. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kupicki. I am here tonight to present our quote for Instructure. You may have previously seen that this is specifically a purchase for our Mastery Predictive Assessments, which we have taken before you before. This year, you will see a slight increase from the twenty-twenty-three school year, and that is based on enrollment of the increase of enrollment with our students. But as you may remember, these are cumulative assessments that our teachers utilize to help provide predictive, predictive performance for students over the course of the year that helps us tailor instruction as it relates to the each of the benchmarks. So most of our teachers know this is a benchmark assessment, so you probably hear that. In addition to the benchmark assessments, this quote also provides teachers access to over eighty-seven thousand assessment questions that are aligned to our standard course of study. Additionally, this also provides support with our Mastery Connect Tracker that allows students and teachers to track specific standards mastery over the course of the school year. Are there any questions?
There's a separate document.
Ms. Lindsay.
Just for clarification, this is the same thing as Canvas?
No, this is different than Canvas. This is specifically, it's the same company that is under Canvas, under the same umbrella. However, this is specifically for our benchmarking assessments in our Mastery Connect platform.
Okay, so this is not anything that we've ever done?
No, we have done this. We, we take this every year about June to renew for the next year. So we've actually done this since two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Walter.
So it's a tool that's predictive, and I think when we first went back in nineteen, the previous stuff that we were using wasn't very predictive on what the outcomes were.
Correct.
So this is good, this is still good? We're still happy, you're getting feedback from teachers that they still want this product?
Yes, so we actually evaluate this process every year and specifically work with the accountability team to be able to triangulate results with EOC and EOGs. And we're still within a ninety-seven percent correlation of predictability. So we feel very strongly that this tool is very valid.
Well, it's a tool that's needed, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Everyone in agreement to put this on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. So we'll just move to eight point oh eight with our Curriculum Associates and Our Ready Resources.
Yes, so the. So the next quote that we're bringing before you today, actually, you may not have seen in front of the board, but we have actually been using this product for nine years, since 2015. This is for our Curriculum Associates and iReady purchase. This year, we're trying to get innovative and creative and working with our vendors to be able to strategically purchase our resources in bulk. So as opposed to our department purchasing resources and then the individual schools purchasing resources, we're collecting the school needs and being able to purchase them in one lump sum to be able to provide us with a cost savings. So as you can see with the iReady quote from a Curriculum Associates, this is actually a diagnostic tool that provides targeted and personalized instruction specifically in ELA and mathematics for elementary and middle school students. There's two parts to this resource, the first of which is a diagnostic assessment that's a universal screener, so it isn't necessarily just on grade-level standards. But if a student's struggling academically, we can target and identify areas in previous grade-level standards that we need to reteach or reloop. Additionally, the same thing is true for students that need advanced academic acceleration opportunities. We are able to see that. This year, you will notice that in the quote that is presented, there is actually going to be a cost savings of $160,000. And that is allowing us to be able to do this in a different way than we've done previously. But in the process, we're hoping to save some money.
Any questions? Ms. Sandage?
I just wanted to see if our teacher liaison could speak to iReady and benefits and et cetera. Can you hear me? I'm sorry, could you hear me?
Yeah. So in my direct experience as an educator, doesn't necessarily use these programs, but I know that the teachers are using them. I've seen it with my personal students, and there's a lot of conversation about being able to utilize the programs. So I think what is helpful is that the teachers are able to, and tell me if I'm wrong, but the teachers are able to kind of calibrate for that specific student and supplement where the deficiencies might be. And so it's an added layer of protection, I guess, to kind of make sure that students aren't kind of falling between some gaps. And so I think that they're definitely valuable when it comes to instruction and making sure our students are able to kind of keep up with standards and lessons as they progress through the school year.
Thanks for that. And also, thanks for the cost savings. Did we just realize this this year?
So actually, twofold. The first of which is the vendor has not previously been able to provide us with the bulk purchasing. So they actually approached us at the beginning of last year and said, hey, listen, we believe that we can make this opportunity available for you if you're strategic in getting all of your needs together, and we can provide it in one quote. So that has not been readily available to us prior to this year.
Thank you. Last question. So I'm always wondering, when we save money, like what next? What do we, you know, do we have ideas of where that funding, those cost savings, go?
Absolutely. So this is a state funding, this is earmarked for state funding. So we actually have a plethora of needs specifically from our schools that we're gathering based on comprehensive needs assessment and school improvement to be able to go back into our wish list and say, what else can we purchase with this cost savings?
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, my question is, on the special notes, help me understand. It says all iReady purchases require professional development. Is that something we do in-house, or is that something that you're required to contract with somebody to do?
No, that's a great question. So this is something that we do in-house. So we're able to work with Curriculum Associates. They actually meet with district staff, and then we provide a train-the-trainer model. So we can actually go out to schools and professional learning communities where teachers are already meeting and looking at this data and provide professional learning versus a separate contracted resource.
So there's not a hidden cost in that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Everyone in agreement to put this on the consent agenda? Great. We'll move to 8.09 with our Budget Resolution and Amendment Number Six and Summary of Change and Fund with Mr. Phil Penn. Welcome back.
Thank you. So before you, you'll see the memo that outlines all the changes in our budget amendments. This is a budget amendment number six that we're presenting tonight. They've laid out within that memo the actual changes within each of the funds, the major ones, anyway. So within Fund One, our Public School Fund, we had a net reduction of $26,000, a minor adjustment for EC funding, offset by a minor adjustment. It was an increase for CTE funds. We'll point out that a couple of minutes ago, I talked about a $2 million surplus. There was another change that came through from the state on Friday that dropped almost $640,000 on us, that we had no visibility to at all. So a $640,000 good guy, if you will. So we're sort of evaluating that and just making sure that it's valid. It seems to be, because we confirmed it from two different sources. But that definitely has some implications on what the surplus may look like at the end of the year. And just given the timing, we just did not have enough time to work all the way through that today. But it's remarkable to me that we're seeing these adjustments this late in the year come through in that matter. That's not something I'm used to, but apparently we'll have to get used to. It's kind of common practice. Local Fund Two, there's no net change, it is zero within the fund. It's just moving from two different expense lines. Within Three, there's an overall increase of about $4,700. That's related to an IDEA grant that you can see outlined in the memo. Special Revenue, there was an increase of about $108,000. Additional driver's ed revenue, Mary Frances Wall stabilization grant for $69,000 to set the budget for the Vexoma Robotics Grant, around $33,000. Capital Outlay was an increase of $3 million. That's 1.5 million for each of the two new elementary schools. That's the advanced funding for the preconstruction work for both of those that the county commissioners approved recently. So they have dropped those funds to us already. And last, in the Kids Plus, $396, almost $397,000 for the North Carolina Child Stabilization Grant. So all in, we're now operating within a total budget across the district and across all funding sources of just under $516 million. And then what follows on after that is the actual memorandum itself that we are looking for board approval on, and the breakouts by fund and by account code. But overall, fairly positive month. I would say no real negatives that popped up within the month of May.
Mr. Walter?
Okay, and as you said, we get stuff, it comes in, stuff goes out. That Fund Seven, that $400,000, that's the last year of that, right? So that goes away next year. So that $400,000 will have to be, we're going to have to find that for next year.
That's right. We're working through a lot of that right now.
Keep that in mind.
That's right. And looking at what is our revenue structure need to be within that going forward for sustainability?
Any other questions? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll put that on our consent agenda as well. 8.10, our Toshiba Service Management Agreement.
So at the last monthly meeting, we presented the outcome of the RFP that we had solicited for the copier agreement. You have before you tonight. It is a very simple, two-page agreement that we have that covers the 60 months for the copiers going forward. As you'll see, it lays everything out as we described when we went through the RFP. It's all based on a per copy or per click charge that we have. We only really pay for, and it says it right there about midway through the first page, we pay for papers, we pay for staples, and we pay for sales tax, right? So that's basically what's in the structure. They're paying for all the hardware, the accessories, the service, the parts, and all the supplies, including all the toner. So this is a fairly favorable agreement to us in that respect. As I mentioned when we presented the RFPs, it actually works out to be about a $90,000 savings versus where we are right now. Most of it's driven off color copies. So we wound up in a better place by having gone through the RFP, I believe. On the back are all the terms and conditions related to the new agreement. And there's nothing in here that causes me any concerns at all. Basically, it means, you know, the copier service collateral to the agreement. We don't have the right to assign or sell or transfer the copiers to anybody else. It's a default, if we don't pay our bill, they can come and take the copiers back if we don't. You know, it's things along those lines. So again, it's a fairly straightforward adjustment. And again, it outlines that maintenance supplies that they cover almost everything except for the commodities that go through the machine, like I said, the paper and staples. So I'm asking for an approval tonight to approve the contract.
So you're asking us to vote on it tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it can actually go to the next month's meeting, to next week's meeting, rather.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any questions, Mr. Walter?
So this matches up with the RFP, right?
Yes, it does.
So if we exceed these copies, these estimated?
Yeah.
What happens?
We get charged at the per copy rate that's indicated.
Same rate, that doesn't matter.
Exactly. There's no, there's no anything above that.
Even if we don't meet, if we don't reach those numbers?
We pay for what we use.
That sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Great, thank you.
And everyone's in agreement to put this on the consent agenda? Okay. Okay, we'll move to 8.11, our Career and Technical Education Federal Funding Grant with Dr. Russell Parker. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Usually, June is the month I get to come stand before you and talk about CTE. I wanted to share some of this during February, but with the realignment discussion, I thought I'd wait till June to share some of these successes from CTE. But with our federal funding application, we every two years have to do a comprehensive local needs assessment. So what I wanted to share with you was some of the items that came out of that that were successes, but also some recommendations. Do you have my presentation up there? Yeah, the one that says "presentation" on the end, it should say. While he's got that up there, there's also an executive summary that's included with the board docs, so you should be able to see that and read through the plan. There we go. You want to go to the next slide, and I'll just jump in on the next one? Go ahead, one more. One of the things I like to do every time I present is include our vision and mission statement for CTE. Our vision statement is to inspire students to create futures and to build community, because just like we're working to build students, we also feel like we're building the Cabarrus community. So that's part of our vision statement. Our mission statement is to build a learning environment where students can pursue their direction and purpose. And every one of the staff that I have, teachers and coordinators, our goal is to help every student find their career direction. And then the purpose statement is that every CTE student and every CCS student will graduate career and college-ready. I wanted to show you some really solid data, if you'll go to the next slide. I'm really proud of these numbers, because this is from 2023. We don't have the 24 data yet. But if you look, there were 2,400, just over 2,400 students in the senior class for fiscal year '23. But look at how many were actually taking CTE courses and finished a CTE pathway. I'm really proud of this number. The bar in the middle is the duplicated count, so that's the number of seats that were in CTE programs. And then the bottom bar is the actual number of students. So almost 77, it was right at 77% of the senior class finished a career technical education pathway. So we're really proud of that number. If you go to the next slide, it shows the total student enrollment for this year. For '24, we had almost 20,000 seats. So that many kids, a lot of kids are taking two or three classes in CTE. But the unduplicated count was just under 13,000. So this, again, huge number of students taking CTE programs. Let me go to the next one. What I have on the slide now is the outline of our funding application. Part One is the comprehensive local needs assessment that we have to do every two years. The second part is about performance indicators, and we have to write strategies about that. And then the last piece are the narratives or our CTE strategic plan. The first piece, if you want to go to the next one, the first piece of our comprehensive local needs assessment is called Evaluation of Performance. And some of the successes that we had that I wanted to share with you is that Cabarrus met or exceeded the state goal in seven out of eight performance indicators. The only one that we did not achieve success in was non-traditional student enrollment, and we struggle with that about every year. So that's a goal for us for the coming year. Credential attainment exceeded the state goal, and also technical attainment on state post-assessments exceeded the state goal. The next one, Recommendations for Evaluation of Performance. I interviewed Dr. Kapiky, and one of the things that he told me during our interview was to start sharing smaller snippets of data. I was wanting to think about how could we share data in a more productive way. So one of his suggestions was to share short monthly emails on smaller data points to all of you, and then also school leadership. So in CTE, we will start doing that for the coming year. Also, the school-level leadership asked for data that is more graphical and could be presented to the staff. And then also, one thing I think was the bottom bullet. They asked for exit interview data, which was really surprising to me, because we had already started creating that. So we now in CTE have an exit interview process where we try to find out why teachers are leaving CTE department. The next one is Size, Scope, and Quality. And the successes that we have are to continue the very successful credentialing process. I'm very proud of our credential process, because this year, the numbers have skyrocketed. So we're doing very well in the credentials. And then also, you know, our career fairs that we have, and we have the C4 Day, which is the Career Connections Day. That was highlighted as a very big success for CTE. And then we have strong CTSOs.
I apologize, Rusty McCray, the credential pieces, isn't this the highest we've ever had?
Yeah, I think it was over 4,200. I don't remember the number, but the data just came out. For '24, we're still calculating the data, so I don't have '24 data.
Thank you.
Yep. The next one was Recommendations for Size, Scope, and Quality. And I know Chuck was just up here presenting, but some of the things that, as far as size, scope, and quality, was to partnership with the facilities department and also risk management, because we're to the point to where with CTE, facilities is a really big need. I can't expand a plumbing program if we don't have a facility. So that's one of the things we've got to look at. Develop a stronger articulation process with the community college. We've met with community college staff, and they want to work with us to make that a clean process so that we have a clean data sharing agreement with them so that students can receive articulated credit. Also, to develop externships for teachers so that teachers stay aware of what's going on in industry, because a lot of times, it's very easy to think about your classroom, but you also need to know what's going on in industry if you're going to teach that. And then a process for middle school CTSOs was also a recommendation. Retention was the next one. Talking about teacher retention. Our success is one of the big successes, I think, for our department, is that we have a really clean process for professional development for CTE. A lot of teachers in CTE are singletons at their school. We might have one drafting teacher at a school. So it's very hard for them to partner with somebody and do, work in a PLC process when there's only one of them. So we've tried in our central office to create a district-wide PLC process. So we will have either a Teams call, something that's online, or we'll have a face-to-face meeting with teachers so that they can actually have someone to work with. It's very hard to do that work on your own. And we also have clean processes in place for new teachers and staff. But the recommendations, again, were to have an exit interview, if you want to go to the next one. And then also encourage staff to obtain the credentials for the courses that they teach. As of right now, it's not a requirement to have the credential for that course, which I feel personally that the teacher ought to be able to have that credential. It's hard to teach the Adobe certification when you don't have it yourself. So getting teachers to do that is a very big, high priority for us this year. Equal access. We'll talk about that. The big success was high quality for CTE programs. And then career guidance is provided to all students who are in CTE. But the recommendations slide, if you want to go to the next one? There's some DECA kids up there. You'll see we had DECA students win. There, that's the one I wanted. To actively recruit non-traditional students. One of the things about us being a federal program is that we have to focus on how we're supporting students in a non-traditional role. So with our C4 Day, we've tried to recruit a guest speaker that might be a woman in the automotive field or a man who's in healthcare. And so we try to really focus on that. But for us, that's been a very tough one, but that's our goal for this year. One of the recommendations was how we market that program. So you'll see the bottom bullet, the marketing plan is the one thing that we're concentrated on, is how do we market non-traditional programs? So that's going to be a focus for our department for the coming year. The next one is labor market. We're almost at the end. One of the successes, and I'm really proud of this one, this one's come up a couple of times, is that our CTE programs are very cleanly aligned to industries that are seen as target industries by the Cabarrus EDC, the Cabarrus Regional Chamber, and also the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. The department has a process for identifying and implementing programs that are in emerging occupations. We try to keep our ear to the ground with the business community, because if we don't, then we will miss a program, and we miss the unemployment or the employment opportunities that come with that. So we do have a process for that. But the recommendations were to continue offering pathways in healthcare, manufacturing, logistics, and then also, again, develop a marketing program so that we're sharing that with parents, so that they can see those programs. If you'll skip to the pathway slide, keep going, there. Another thing that I'm really proud of in CTE is for the coming school year, we will have 52 career pathways. This current year, we had 48. So I'm really proud that we're adding a couple more. We're adding some pathways. One is game art design, which will be at Central Cabarrus. We're also adding digital design and animation, which will again be at Central Cabarrus. And then we're also adding the veterinary assisting program this year, which I'm thrilled with. We've had a lot of people ask for that. So that will be added this year. And then we're expanding the nursing fundamentals pathway. If you look at the next slide, this is the one I wanted to hit, too. Constantly in our local needs assessment, it kept coming up about manufacturing. And we only really offer that at J.M. Robinson as part of their academy. But we have been asked about where can we offer the advanced manufacturing courses that are provided through the state? Is there other opportunities for that? So we're looking at how to make that a reality. The other one is also healthcare. And the question came up a lot is how can we diversify healthcare so there's more opportunities in specific healthcare areas or subcategories? The first one was dental assisting. It has been discussed a lot about offering a dental program as part of Northwest Cabarrus High School's Academy of Health Sciences. We even took a team over to Gastonia to go visit Highland School of Technology. They have the We even took a team over to Gastonia to go visit Highland School of Technology. They have the state's only dental program for high school. And once we did that, Rowan Cabarrus Community College was all over it. So they're very excited that if we would offer that, that would make a lot of people happy. So we are looking at how to make that a reality, also with pharmacy technician and also sports training or athletic training. And the other one that's not on there is really, medical office assisting is another one that has come up as a possibility. Before we go too much further, the next slide's the one I wanted to really share with you about nursing fundamentals. For those who may not know, nursing fundamentals was offered only at the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences up until this year. Every student from schools across the district could go to the college and take nursing fundamentals there on their property. Well, with the early college opening up, all of the seats now go to the early college students and there were none for the comprehensive high schools. So we started expanding nursing fundamentals all across the district. And we've had to do it in a phase-in process, which is what this slide's about. This current year, Cox Mill and JM Robinson added nursing fundamentals. And then for the coming school year, Hickory Ridge, Central Cabarrus, Concord, Mount Pleasant, and then the early college of the Cabarrus Health Sciences Institute, they will also add nursing fundamentals. And then in 25, 26, West Cabarrus and Northwest will also offer it. So that way we are trying our best to fill the need in the healthcare industry because right now there's a tremendous need. So this is Cabarrus County Schools' answer to that. We put nursing fundamentals everywhere. The next one is other areas to expand is the trades areas. And again, this is a facilities need, so I don't want Chuck to get mad at me for putting this up here, but I'm gonna have to have his help before we do something like this. If we put HVAC or plumbing or anything like that, again, that's a facilities question that we have to discuss over the next couple of years. Hospitality, logistics and public safety are also recommendations. Engineering. A question that came up in the CLNA was the engineering piece. We teach engineering very standard, just straightforward engineering and it's, it's the same class no matter what area you're in. But one thing that came out of the, the assessment was how do we break that down so that engineering is seen as either biomedical engineering or how do you teach industrial engineering or civil engineering and break it down into a specialized area? So one of the things our team's going to do this year is look at that and how do we make that a reality and break that down. The next piece is one thing I wanted to share with everybody. We've had a big success this week, actually. We have been trying to partner with Salesforce because to help us with our work-based learning initiative. We've struggled a lot in CTE with how to manage business partnerships. So we heard that Salesforce actually has an education arm to where you can partner with Salesforce and they'll help you manage databases as far as, they're a customer relationship management product, which some of you may know about. But with education, they help manage internships, apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeships, all the above. So our training was last Thursday. The product goes live this week. And so from now on, we will have a link on our website so that if someone wants to partner with CTE, they can go to their website, click on that link and fill out a form and tell us exactly what they want to do. Do they want to be a guest speaker? Do they want to read a book to somebody? Do they, what do they want to do to help us out? And so that will go live this week. And that's probably the biggest thing I'm proud of in this whole presentation is that that goes live this week. One of the recommendations is to start an apprenticeship program that's district-wide. Some of you may know of Apprenticeship 2000 that is in Charlotte. Guilford also has a great one called Guilford Apprenticeship Partners. But the recommendation has been made for us to start Apprenticeship Cabarrus and to look at how can we do that for Cabarrus County. That'll also include Kannapolis City Schools, but again, we can work together with them like we've done on several other projects to create something of that magnitude. For the strategic plan. There you go. Success, high-quality business advisory structure, business advisory council and advisory boards. But recommendations for our strategic plan is to align the business advisory council with the industry boards. I like to have those aligned and we don't have those aligned perfectly just yet. To work closer with industry associations and then again, have teachers take business tours. To wrap up, I wanted to talk about the career development initiative, if you can go to the next slide. I know everybody's heard of Senate Bill 193 about career development plans. What we're doing in Cabarrus County is we moved from a product called Naviance. Now we work with a company called Major Clarity. A lot of districts across the state and around our region, they work with Major Clarity. But with that initiative, the purpose now is there was a technical change this week or last week to where now it's, students have to be out of eighth grade and it used to be seventh grade, but now they've changed it to just have to be out of middle school to have a career development plan before they can leave middle school. And then it has to be updated by, before they leave 10th grade. But our successes, I will say, this year we were in a pilot for the career development plan. If you want to go to the next slide. Cabarrus was part of that. And as we went through the pilot, I realized how far we are above other districts because we have a product in place already and we have the Career Continuum, which is a structure for career development from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So we are very far above some other districts that do not have that structure in place yet. So we, we, this summer for successes, we're going to be training all the school counselors and all the CTE coordinators on that product and moving career development on. I think I've got the next one. I'm done. The last recommendation was to strengthen the career development process through the Career Continuum and then to develop again, parent communication so that parents are very much aware of it. That's the end of it. So thank you. But I wanted to end on this right here because everything that is in our plan, we've tried to focus it back on our purpose to where every student will be career and college ready before they graduate. And that's CTE in a nutshell for today. So I would like to take any questions, but also to recommend that this program be put on consent for next week.
So Kelly first. So Dr. Parker, prior to the board asking you questions or inquiring about some of these you talked about, I just wanted to thank you for all the work you've done. And over the course of, we've had many conversations. I was involved in monitoring process with you. The report came back was outstanding. It's a tribute to your leadership and all the good things that you're doing. The fact that we're growing our pathways, going, adding four more pathways and seeking further opportunities to develop those partnerships collaboratively with the community is really important. The, the career and technical education, I don't think we could ever fail to acknowledge and recognize how important this is to what we do here in Cabarrus County Schools and all the opportunities it presents to kids. So I commend the board for their continued support of this. And to all of your teachers, your staff, your department. We have a phenomenal CTE program that just continues to get better and stronger and offer more things to kids. And I really appreciate your leadership on that. So thank you.
Ms. Standage.
So I was going to say congratulations for all of the successes and I appreciate the presentation. I do understand the importance of us having CTE and being able to offer that to students. My questions were in relation to, I think you mentioned it, about being able to see students actually get to that career or get to that job from them being in the program. And I want to understand how we do that now or, you know, you touched on it a little bit, that there's a plan to start looking at, into that. Can you help me understand how that actually comes into fruition?
It's a couple of things involved in that. To get it, we were actually discussing this in my office today. What do kids do when they walk off the graduation stage and what does Monday morning look like? We really don't have a way to track that district-wide. In CTE, we have a thing called the concentrator feedback survey. And we're required through federal legislation, we're required to do a survey six months after someone graduates to find out where they are. Are they in the military or are they employed or they're in school? What, what are they doing? And a huge number of our students are already in those areas, but I think about, that is just CTE. I don't know, I don't have a way of capturing numbers for students that are outside of CTE. Where do they go? And I'm glad that that 77% was up there, but I'd love to see it be 100. Because I, I feel like every student, whether you're going to college or not, you need a career pathway. You need some type of career direction. So I think that's a gap that we need to fill is how do we get the kids that are not CTE? Because I can pretty much tell you the CTE kids, but the other ones I would not know.
Gotcha. And, and my question was specific to the CTE kids. I want to make sure that what they're studying actually gets them to where they want to be as it relates to a job. If that's their, their pathway, right? And do we have data that tells us, you know, these many kids completed the program? This is the pathway that they were on and they actually got a job from, from that. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we do have some of that data. Again, it's that concentrator feedback survey and we get a breakdown of that. So we would have that. So we can, we can pull that data and, you know, kind of disaggregate where they are, whether military or whatever. Yeah, we would have that data.
Thank you. So that, that'll be something for next, next year to ask a question about. Okay, good. I thought you mentioned it.
I'll put that in my notes for your question for next year. I'll tackle that.
Yeah, I'm really, yeah. I asked this last year too, but it was a little bit different because I, I had identified a small business that wanted to actually partner with us. So. My other question is in relation to the pathways. So we're adding pathways, which tells me that all of the pathways are being utilized at capacity, right? So we're not seeing pathways that are not, maybe there, there should be 100 kids in there, but there's only 50. We don't see that is what, do I understand that correctly?
We have a few pathways that we need to reevaluate and really it's just because of changes in the economy in our local area. One of that is we teach apparel design. And that if you look at the economic data from the Department of Commerce, that is something that that's declining. But also another one, and I hate to say this in Cabarrus County because it's such a big program, but the other one is agriculture. And we have a huge number of students in agriculture. But if you look at the jobs that are available and part of this study that I did was including that. Cabarrus County offers enough students graduating from our agricultural programs to fill every job in agriculture in the Charlotte region for years, like we're producing above what we need. So there's a couple that we really need to look at and tweak. Are we, are, is it truly lined up with industry? But those are two that, that came out of the study. But yeah. All the other ones that we have, like that's why we've intentionally tried to put finance at Hickory Ridge. And we've really honed in on manufacturing at JM Robinson and tried to really align it with what economic data is telling us now. But there are a few that we need to evaluate.
Okay. And how often does that happen?
For us, we do it because of the Perkins legislation, we do it every two years.
Okay, thank you.
That, the comprehensive needs assessment is a two-year process.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you for this presentation. It's always nice to see and to understand how many students are benefiting from it. I just wanted to look at some of the opportunities that you mentioned. First, can you define what non-traditional means? And then second, the other question I had was for, oh, now I'm blanking. The. No. You answered my question on the middle schools. That was the other question that I had. And then if I think of it, I'll let you know. Sorry.
Non-traditional, that's a tough one. The, the way that our legislation defines non-traditional is it's a student or someone that's in an occupation that is, that they are the minority gender in that occupation, for example.
Okay.
A lot of people think of a nurse as a lady, but we know that that's not true. So it's really hard for us to recruit men to go into nursing fundamentals programs. Same thing with automotive. There's a lot of people think that is a male-dominated industry, being in the automotive industry. But it's truly not. There's a lot of women that do very successful careers in that industry. So we are supposed to recruit actively to genders to go into, both genders to go into a program and not, or to work against that definition. So, and that's actually part of our performance indicators. So we have to actively do that as a district.
And then the second thing that did come back to me was teacher turnover and your exit interviews. I recognize that you're hiring professionals or former professionals. And so they might be new to the teaching profession. They might under, so I'm just trying to get a sense of what that, what that looks like for you to have, to increase programs. What is your challenge? I mean, the entire education field has an issue with retention and, and recruiting. But I just wanted to know specifically for you, what do you find to be some opportunities and what do you think you'll gain by having exit, exit interviews?
The, the purpose of the exit interviews for us was just to kind of target what, what issues teachers are facing when they leave. Because my fear is that they didn't get the support they needed from my office or some of my coordinator team and I want to make sure that we didn't miss anything. Or if a new teacher leaves, then I wanted to find out, did they, did they leave because they didn't feel supported? Did we miss something? So really that's the purpose of the exit interview. And we, I did run that by human resources with Michael Williams and Cortland Reeves before we ever did it. But yeah, that's the goal is to find out, did we miss something and what can we do to improve ourselves? So that's the goal of the exit interview for us.
And just about, so do you have any openings or challenges to fill because of some of these pathways are so particular?
We do. For us, probably right now, the toughest is nursing fundamentals. Because the Department of Public Instruction, the licensure to teach that, you have to have an RN. You have to be a registered nurse. So that's a tough one to fill when they could be out in industry, you know, making a little bit more money. So, but nursing fundamentals is a tough one right now. We have two positions open for that right now. So that's, that's the challenge. But also, it's the same way with our engineering program. If we have somebody that can teach engineering, more than likely they're going to be out in industry making a little bit more money. So that's a tough one as well.
Ms. Lancy.
Thank you. I always love listening to your program, your report to us. And you know, my heart is with CTE for sure. You had mentioned hospitality. Why did I think we had that previously? Did we not have hospitality?
We do. And really I put that under the expansion slide because it is now a full academy at Concord. And it's going very, very well. They, all those courses are pre-full with every pathway. So really they, we tried to look at where do we offer it other places? And right now, it's, a lot of people don't know, but it's going very well at Cox Mill. They have a fantastic culinary program there. It's just not part of the academy structure, like what is at Concord? So we have hospitality and tourism other places. We just need to look at how do we shore that up? And the key with that too is also how do we get students into an internship process with them? Because a lot of times with hospitality and tourism, they'll learn more from an internship than they will a classroom space. So with hospitality, we really, really want to beef up the internship piece with that program.
Okay, gotcha. I'm so jealous about the veterinary assistance program. I think that's fantastic. Do you know what school?
It will be at Central this year. And then the plan for the next year for 25, 6 is open either Mount Pleasant with their agriculture program or at Northwest with their program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I'll say again, thank you. It's always a highlight to have you come.
Thank you.
Every year, it's one of those things we're very proud of is our CT program and our program choice. Thank you for you and all the staff that, that put all the work into, into our students and making sure there are options to engage, engage them in their, on education. Can you go a little bit over the, the budget on how that's determined and are there any changes over the last year or what?
Yeah, we've, as far as our budget, we, we don't have our federal budget yet. I don't know.
This is the slide, I'm talking about your summary here. Executive summary.
Oh, on the last page of the executive summary. We do the, the PRC 13, one is our payroll. And from what we received from the state, it went down a little bit this year. Not sure why, but it went down just a little bit. But then also our state funding, the, the allotment that they gave us, it went down slightly, but not a lot. And then the federal piece that's on there is actually the current year's budget because we have not received our federal, federal budget yet. I think we were told it would be sometime mid-July before we get it and know the actual number. So that, that federal number is for the current school year, 23, 24.
So how does that affect us if we don't have that money yet?
Excuse me?
How does that affect us if we don't get that money to a timely basis?
That might be a Mr. Penn question, but.
But anyway, we're going to submit and those, those are the numbers that we're asking.
That's it. The only thing that comes later that's not on that list is also our credential funding because now the state of North Carolina has provided all of the funding for our credentials that we offer. I used to have to pull that from our operating fund, but I don't do that anymore. So when, we will get that probably mid-October. So I'll be, I'm sure I'll be in front of you again and we'll talk about that.
Well, that's fantastic as well because that's obviously a big piece of the CTE and what we're targeting.
That's what's helped our, our credential numbers increase this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I'd just like to say thank you too for the presentation and for what you're, what you and your team do. It's important that our students have something to do when they graduate. So this is excellent. So many opportunities.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. Okay, board members, everyone in agreement to put this on consent? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move to eight point one, two, City of Concord and Cabarrus County SRO contracts with Mr. Phil Penn.
Good evening for what I think is the last time tonight. You have before you two contracts, one labeled the contract, one's an MOU, but it gets you to the same place. One with the city of Concord, one with Cabarrus County for the SRO programs that we have here. There's actually only two changes from the expiring contract. One is the dates. And one is the fact that the Beverly Hills SRO is going to move to CC Griffin as a second officer within that school. Other than that, the terms and conditions are exactly the same word for word as what the expiring contracts are. So within the contract with the county, we have 17 SROs that we pay for. There's seven that are provided in kind to us by the county. It's also three supervisors. Now, two-thirds of these typically get funded through our at-risk funds that were provided to by the state. And the other third gets provided by our local funds and we budget for that each year. There's a similar structure on the city side that there are 17 that we also pay for. There's five provided that are in kind. There's also one supervisor that we have there as well. And it, again, is factored into our budget request that we, in our contractual services line, that we build in the, any kind of price escalation. So as you'll see, one differentiator within the city contract is that they leave open the possibility of a three and a half percent increase. And that's probably based on what their contract negotiations are, their labor relations negotiations are with their police officers. But this is as expiring for all intents and purposes. So our recommendation. So our recommendation is for next week to approve both contracts, so that we can get them in place for July first. I am only here to speak to the opera, to the financial pieces, that there's others in the room that can speak better to operational questions around how the SROs work.
Ms. Sanders.
So can you tell me where there will be two, where you're adding that officer from Beverly Hills? Where is that going?
C.C. Griffin.
And can you tell me the rationale behind the decision, Dr. Vicki?
Yeah, Annie. Just base, base mainly on population, but you haven't kind of gone into detail.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The decision to add the Beverly Hills officer to the C.C. Griffin school is based on Concord Police Department's data for where the needs are, and based on the population, the numbers of the average daily membership.
And I'm just guessing that's the only place where we would need two. We didn't identify that we need two somewhere else.
Correct. Because of the way the grant is right now, we don't have an opportunity to ask for more yet. When the next school year's grant comes, that is one of our discussion points, of where else we might need to add additional SROs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Tredaway.
I was pleasantly surprised when I opened the email and saw the new contract. I was under the impression that they had done a salary study, and that their salaries were going to go up as well. So I was kind of surprised that it was kind of revenue-neutral.
It is, although I will tell you, depending on what timing that salary study took place, we are seeing higher salaries than we had seen more than two years ago in the contract prior to the one that's expiring.
And I should clarify, at least my source was from the Sheriff's Department. I don't know about the city.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Walter.
I just, again, it's just a commitment and a partnership that we have with Cabarrus County and City of Concord to make sure that we, our schools have officers that are responding, and develop a relationship with those schools, so that's, and those communities, and I think that's important. The other thing I got to disclose, that I do work with the City of Concord. I don't have any financial interest in this particular contract, but if you'd like me to abstain from the vote, I'm happy to do so.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Sanders.
I just want to understand, so currently, we have the SROs we need in places that we need them, correct? Okay, thank you. That makes me feel a little better.
I just want to take, take the opportunity too, to thank Amy Louder and her work, and working with all of the SROs across the county and the city, and the two departments. Amy's too humble to say this, but Amy just spent the last weekend in Kentucky, over the last couple of days, working with some national folks, and her, she came back, she followed up with me today. We talked a lot about some of these that she was exposed to, and it's really neat and, and, and an honor to see that other districts, not in the area, I always talk about local, state, national. Nationally, Amy's, Amy has a reputation that speaks for itself, and people are reaching out to us to find out what we're doing, and how we're doing about keeping our schools safe. You can never be too safe, and Amy and I are always talking about different things, and my question always is, Amy, where are we in terms of the curve? We're doing some really exceptional things in terms of keeping our schools safe, and we will continue to do that. And a lot of that credit goes to Amy and her leadership, so I want to thank her for that and the time she puts into this, so it just, it's, it would, I'd be remiss of me if I didn't point that out. I mean, she's spectacular, what she does, and her leadership just shines through in all of this, so thank you, Amy.
So is the board in agreement to put this on the consent agenda? Okay, board members, we will go to nine point zero-one, our adjournment of our meeting. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, this meeting is now adjourned.